Ladies and gentlemen, this time we'll call the Tuesday, November 19, 2013, Meeting of the Aradale County Board of Commissioners to Order. We'll have our invocation if you would bow with us, please. Heavenly Father, thank you again for this opportunity to serve you. We recognize you as our Creator and our Sustainer. We recognize you as the source of everything that is good and all wisdom. Tonight I pray that we would do good, that we would be wise, that we would immolate you, that we would be the image of you as we serve others, as you have served us. We pray for everyone here. We pray that you would bless them. We pray for our staff. You would give them wisdom in the day-to-day operations of this county. We pray you would give wisdom to this board, that we would set good policy and that they would execute that policy in a way that would please you and benefit those we serve. We ask it in your name. Amen. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of our Country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of this country.
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments of this agenda coming from the staff this evening?
Yes. I have one adjustment under a closed session. I'd like to add attorney-client, and that's General Statute 143, 31811A3.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. Are there any adjustments to the agenda from any member of the board this evening? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion for adoption of this agenda as amended.
Motion to approve.
Well, if a motion to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'm going to exercise a bit of discretion as chairman. It's not on the agenda, but I'm going to ask Ms. Jean Moore, our present clerk to the board, to meet me out in front for a presentation. I know she's a person of this thing. Do me one more favor, Ms. Moore. The only way you can get this lady to accept any attention of herself is to put her on the spot, and that's why I had to do this. Let me tell you, I've been doing this for 19 years. I don't know a more humble, gracious, kind, competent person than I've ever worked with than this lady right here. She would never tell you that. I overheard her speak to Jim McNally. She said, "I'd just like to stay out of the spotlight and out of the attention." And that's an understatement. And I want to tell you, I don't know what your opinion is of the way we operate up here, but the order that you do see is largely attributable to this lady here. Many times as chairman, she's kept me out of trouble. Because all of you have seen me outside of this building, and you know I can do some stupid things sometimes. This lady always helps keep me straight. She keeps this board straight. And she is the type of person, if someone is going to contact the Board of Commissioners, this is exactly the type of person you want having the initial contact with the public. She's highly professional, highly competent, very intelligent. I've come to admire her so much, as everyone that I know admires her so much. And I know I'm embarrassing her to death up here, but Jean, we just appreciate you and love you so much. You've been such a blessing to this board, to the people of this county, and we just thank you so much. And this is a personal gift from the board that we wanted to give you, and the county didn't pay for that, we paid for it. But we just wanted to give that to you, and know how much personally that we appreciate you and thank you. And I guess it's too much to ask you if you want to say anything yet.
Again, I'm humbled. It's been an honor to work for Aradale County. I've made so many friends, long-lasting friends, and again, it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Good luck, Jean.
Starnes and Associates, CPAs, who will present the June 30, 2013 financial statements for Aradale County. And who's going to?
I'll make a note of that, that that wasn't paid by the county.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
And also, Susan, thank you for having me tonight. I want to remind you, this is the fiscal year audit, or the audit for fiscal year 2013, and we would like to thank you guys for allowing us to serve as your auditor once again. Okay, so for fiscal year 13, Martin Starnes and Associates issued an unmodified opinion for the county of Aradale. You used to see this as, in prior years, as an unqualified opinion, and all that means is, it is the clean and best opinion that we can give anybody for a governmental audit. Due to standard changes, they now call it unmodified rather than unqualified. We did not issue any management letter or note any findings or material or significant issues with the county's audit for fiscal year 13. And the staff, the finance staff, was wonderful, and they were fully prepared, and they were very cooperative. We enjoy working with them, and we think that you guys have a bunch of wonderful ladies down in finance. So talking about fund balance, for the general fund, you guys ended up the year with an increase in fund balance of $2.4 million. And we'll discuss this a little bit more in the next few slides coming up. So fund balance, it serves as a measure of the county's financial resources available. Again, due to new standards this year, the accounting equation for governmental entities have changed. You used to see assets plus, or assets minus liabilities equals fund balance. This year, they have thrown in the deferred outflows and deferred inflows, and that doesn't really change anything on the county, it's just some simple reclassifications of some of your general ledger accounts. So for fiscal year 13, some of the things that you'll see in deferred outflows include bond premiums that are to be amortized in future years, and deferred inflows would include unavailable revenues such as prepaid taxes and taxes receivable. And then down at the bottom here, we just want to summarize the different types of fund balance classifications. Last year was when, the first year that they had come up with these five different classifications for fund balance. They include non-spendable fund balance, restricted fund balance, committed fund balance, assigned and unassigned. So available fund balance is defined by the local government commission as total fund balance. You take away your non-spendable fund balance and your stabilization by state statute, and you have what they call available fund balance. And your available fund balance are the portion of fund balance that's available for the board to appropriate. So looking at the county's available fund balance, it looks like you guys have $42 million. Again, total fund balance in the general fund was $57,000. You have non-spendable fund balance of $223,209, and then stabilization by state statute of $15 million, $15.5 million, which puts you right about $42 million. And compared to prior year's available fund balance, you had an increase of $2.1 million. So fund balance as a percentage, available fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures, you're looking at 27% for 2013. As compared to 2012, you guys had a 1% increase in available fund balance. So the LGC, the local government commission, they recommend that a local government have at least 8% of available fund balance, and you guys have 27. So the reason why they recommend 8% is because they say that's one month's worth of expenditures. So for Aradale County, 27% means you have three months' worth of fund balance for your general fund expenditures. So to summarize the general fund for 2013, revenues increased from prior year of almost 1%. That's about $1.4 million. The increase in this area, you will see that there was increase in valuation with property taxes, and there's an increase in local option sales taxes as well. For expenditures, you can see that you have almost like a $5 million increase in total expenditures over prior year. Some of the areas with increases include your information systems management department, which is part of general government, and what's going on there this year, you guys have software conversion, and so that general government increased. And then there's also an increase in public safety. And we'll discuss public safety a little bit more in a couple slides. This, the amounts up here, they do not include transfers in or out, or any other financing sources or uses, such as debt proceeds and transfers. And looking at revenues, the top three revenues for Aradale County include property taxes, federal state grants, and other licenses, other taxes and licenses. Your ad valorem property taxes make up 62% of your total revenues. Other taxes and licenses make up 18%, and your grants total about 12%. And then there's other revenues, the other 8%. It includes unrestricted intergovernmental permits fees, sales and services, and miscellaneous revenue. So if we look at the top revenue, your ad valorem taxes, we see an increase of about $2.1 million from prior year. So as I mentioned earlier, that's due to the increase in total valuation from prior And one more thing I want to mention about the ad valorem taxes, your valuation increased due to new construction that you guys have, and an increase in motor vehicle valuation and increase in business personal property taxes. So your other taxes and licenses, which really is your local option sales tax, we saw an increase in $1.4 million from prior year. More specifically, Article 39 and Article 42 taxes increased from prior year. Restricted intergovernmental includes your federal and state grants. We saw a decrease this year of $1.9 million, and that's mainly due to the Department of Health and Human Services grant revenues. Because of state budget cuts, you guys had, you received less revenue for foster care program, the crisis intervention and childcare programs. So you'll see later on, since you have a decrease in revenues, you will also see a decrease in expenditures for those programs. Your top three expenditures in the general fund includes public safety, human services, education. The total expenditures for the general fund was about $156,000. The top expenditure, the top function department is your education at 29%, and there's about $46 million in expenditures there. Human services had about $30,000, $30 million, and public safety had $29 million. So looking at education expenditures, it does not include debt service. So any debt that you have for school-related expenditures is not included in these numbers. You're looking at $46 million for education in 2013, which shows about a $1.2 million increase. And the increase in public schools' current expenditures is mainly due to the ADM increasing from pupils, from 28,383 pupils in fiscal year 12 to 28,505. So the population is the main reason for this increase. Human services, you see that $2 million, almost a $2 million decrease. And again, that relates to the Department of Health and Human Services grants that you did not receive. You received about a $1.9 million less this year. So in relation to that, you will see less in expenditures compared to prior year. Again, that's cuts in the foster care program, crisis intervention, and childcare. Then public safety expenditures, there's an increase of about $1.3 million from prior year, so you're looking at about a 4.5% change. Some of the increases are due to emergency medical services, the EMS department, and what's going on there is you guys had, they had to change two 12-hour shifts at the State Full Base, which requires six additional paramedic positions and a supervisor. And then the jail, there was an increase in $200,000 for jail expenditures. And those increases contribute to buildings and grounds maintenance at the jail annex, food services, and housing inmates out of county. So your solid waste disposal facility fund ended up with a $1.8 million net operating income. And if you'll look down there where it says unrestricted net position, that's kind of like your available fund balance for the solid waste fund. So you guys have about $12 million to appropriate at that fund. Within the EMS fund, you guys ended up with $333,000 net operating income. Again, unrestricted net position for this fund is $701,000, and there's no debt in this fund. And I just wanted to mention that these numbers up here for the EMS fund, this is the first full year of operations for this fund, so if nothing really changes for next year, we should see these about the same numbers for next year. Okay, and I know I went through these pretty quick, but if anybody has any questions about any of these slides or revenues and expenditures, I'll take some questions at this time.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you for having me.
I don't have a question. I do have one clarification or comment. The pie chart you had on the Division of General Fund Expenditures showed 25%, I mean 29% for education. And as you mentioned, debt service was not included in that. If I'm not mistaken, I think the debt service on school buildings is over $20 million a year, and if that's included, the amount for education approaches half of the total general fund, over 20%. I just wanted to clarify that. That's around 52%. Whatever.
Okay, let's see. This right here, the 29%, we show education at $46 million.
And the debt service is, I don't know precisely what it is, but it's over $20 million.
Can we just add? That is correct. It's about 52% for educational spending. These pie charts are based on the display that we're required to report our caper in, and we-
Well, I understand that. I just wanted to clarify that.
But yes, you're correct. That's why. Thank you, Susan.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I guess not. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. The next appointment is Mr. Stan Thompson. He will address the board about an unexpected increase in property values and taxes from the opening of Highway 150 Bridge to all boat traffic. Welcome, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, sir, and thanks for this opportunity to talk to you. Is there anyone here who speaks personal computer? I only speak Macintosh, and I don't know how to turn on my PowerPoint.
Stan, did you load it?
No. However, I do have a copy. Pulling out money. Whoops, that's not it. No weapon. I know it's in there somewhere.
Stan, unless you made arrangements of someone, I don't think anyone up here knows that it's been put on there.
Okay, excuse me. I'm going to have to talk from the hard copy, and I really regret that, because I was depending on the slides. I'm a member of the Transportation Committee at the Mooresville Chamber and have been for about 10 years. And before I retired, I was with the long-range planning part of AT&amp;T and Bell South. Recently, about March, we had a presentation about the widening of Highway 150. And we learned that the, excuse me, I believe you folks have a handout that have this? Okay, great. We had a presentation about that, and it turned out that they were contemplating just putting a second bridge in where the existing bridge has been on Highway 150 near the Marina where the Catawba Queen and the Lady of the Lake are. Some of us were really astonished by that, because that would cut the lake in two for another 50 years. And so we began to calculate what would be involved, and in making, if we could make it higher, and we could open it to all marine traffic, including the Catawba Queen, and also larger personal boats. And the nature of the lake has changed dramatically in the 50 years since it was built. It was a rural and textural area with mostly farms and forests here, and now it's gone to the point of having the largest economic development capability of the micro-politan area in terms of attracting new companies in the country. And so what my presentation is about is about what the effect would be if we were able to open the lake, and what the effect that it would have on values of property here. And what I did was to take the total property value for the four counties that touch on the lake, which is known, and I got that off of the State Department of Revenue website. And I assigned an estimated percentage of those values that I attributed to the fact that the lake was here. This is how much more they are than they would have been if the lake wasn't here. The amount that I attributed to our county was 30%. I think that's lowball. I think it might be closer to 40, but I wanted to lowball all my figures. And I took 2% for Mecklenburg, and 10% for Lincoln, and 5% for Catawba. And then I summed up all of those amounts that were attributable to having built a lake. And I said that there's probably $8 billion of taxable real property in the state that is attributable to having built that lake. I then took some percentages of the value of that amount that would be attributable to opening the whole lake, so that all 32,000 acres of water were available to any vessel. And I started with a half a percent, and I went up in half a percent increments to 3%. The bottom line is that at half a percent of the calculated lake value, it would be $41 million, and at 3%, it would be $249 million. So essentially, what I'm saying is that by making the bridge high enough to allow any vessel to go under it, then the value of living on the lake, or relocating your business to this area, would drive the value of the property on it for roughly a quarter of a billion dollars. So this is, I'm rather inclined to postpone this, because it's very hard for me to talk without the slides, unless there was a copy, another copy of the program. So this amount of money is to be compared with the cost, the additional cost of making the bridge higher. It turns out there may not be any additional cost in making the bridge higher, because the nature of the bridge is very unusual. It's 10 stories high. It was built essentially dry before they filled up the lake. But now, whatever bridge they build, will have to work down through 85 or 90 feet of water to get to put in the footings, which is an extremely expensive process, and it doesn't have much to do at all with how high the bridge is above the water. And so the proportion of the cost of the bridge is going to be very low, and in fact, enough to be negligible. So the point that I'm hoping to make here is that if we can create about a quarter of a billion- a billion dollars' worth of taxable value and not have to spend any tax for it, that is a very attractive proposition. I think that I will just cut off my presentation here and come back whenever the next meeting is and make this presentation. I apologize. I had thought that I had succeeded in sending the replacing PowerPoint, but apparently it did not arrive. Or else it's here, and I don't know how to find it in a non-Macintosh computer. So pardon me for the confusion.
That's fine. Thank you, sir. This time, we'll declare the meeting to be in a public hearing in consideration of a possible economic development incentive for an undisclosed company, Project Cupid. Welcome, Mr. Carney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as always, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of Project Cupid. Mooresville and Iredell County are competing with five other locations across the nation for this project. Project Cupid is an existing manufacturer within Iredell County that has tentatively planned to expand their operations. If our community were selected, the company would invest between $13 million and $25 million in new machinery and equipment. And this project would also bring a minimum of 50 new full-time positions to the facility, paying wages that exceed the Iredell County wage average. On behalf of Project Cupid, we're requesting incentive consideration based on the Iredell County's industrial development incentive policy. If Project Cupid chooses to locate, full disclosure of company and project details will be made available. Based on a minimum investment of $13 million and increased tax value, an incentive grant would equal $50,440 per year for five years totaling $252,200. Based on a maximum investment of $25 million and increased tax value, that incentive would equal $97,000 per year for five years totaling $485,000. On behalf of the MSI DC and its Board of Directors, I want to thank you for your time and consideration of these matters, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have at this point in time.
Does any member of the board have any questions, Mr. Carney, this evening? I guess not. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to this economic development incentive? If you would, come forward and state your name for the record, please. Hearing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and the floor is open for discussion or motion. It's your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the incentive ranging between $252,200 and $485,000 over a five-year period based on the company's investment that ranges between $13 million and $25 million in contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Robertson. Grant this request. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
This time, we'll declare this meeting to be in a public hearing in consideration of a possible economic development incentive for an undisclosed company, Project Tool. Again, Mr. Carney.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. I'm also here tonight to bring before you Project Tool. Project Tool is a German-based manufacturer looking to locate or relocate their U.S. headquarters into Iredell County. They're an advanced manufacturing company focused in the areas of automotive, defense, and medical device manufacturing. If Mooresville and Iredell County were selected, the company would invest $2275,000 in facility purchase and new machinery and equipment. The company would also create 38 initial full-time jobs with average wages exceeding $80,000 per year. The company plans to hire a total of 45 employees over the next five years as a long-term goal. To aid in landing and locating this project, we are requesting that incentive consideration be given to Project Tool based on Iredell County's industrial development incentive policy. If Project Tool chooses to locate, full announcement of the company and project details will be made available. Based on an investment of $2275,000, that incentive grant would equal $8,827 per year for five years totaling $44,135. Again, I would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have regarding this project.
Any member of the board have any questions, Mr. Carney, in regard to Project Tool? If not, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to this? If you would, come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Christine Sefransky, and I just want to know why they're undisclosed.
To answer that question, the company is currently undisclosed because they do have a U.S. location. And to protect the company from letting its employees at its current location know, as they discuss how to relocate those current employees, they wish to remain undisclosed at this point in time until we finalize all the details of the project.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? If not, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion or discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve $44,135 incentive over a five-year period based on the company's $2275,000 investment in contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of this request from Commissioner Robertson. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Carney.
Thank you so much.
That brings us to administrative matters. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item, A, is a request from the Register of Deeds for approval of the records, retention, and disposition schedule. And our Register of Deeds, Matt McCall, will make that request.
Welcome, Mr. McCall.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'm here before you tonight to request the adoption of an amendment to the records retention schedule published by the Department of Cultural Resources. This is a fairly simple administrative matter, and I'm here for any questions you might have.
Any questions, Mr. McCall? Okay, not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson and board. And also, on a personal note, congratulations to Mrs. Moore on her retirement.
Item B is a request from Becky Gallahere, our Board of Elections Director, for approval of Budget Amendment Number 11 for the appropriation of HAVA funds.
Thank you. I'm here to ask you to approve, we've awarded a federal grant of $28,417 to purchase additional voting booths. And I'm here to ask for you to approve that budget amendment.
Any questions, Ms. Gallahere?
The purchase will actually give us 132 extra booths. Each unit has four booths and three regular and one ADA unit, so it increases our ADA units as well.
There's no questions. The floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. I heard Mr. Boone first, so I'll say a motion made by Mr. Boone for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Item C is a request from Vehicle Services for the approval of a resolution authorizing the disposition of surplus vehicles. And Dean Lael and John Williams are both here to make the request.
Good evening. We're here to request that 14 vehicles that currently have been replaced from our fleet and are no longer surmountable for our purpose to be declared surplus, and I'd be given authorization to be able to sell those according to general statute or according to the ordinances that we have here in place. If you'll notice the vehicle list, many of those are from our ICAS department. Those vehicles have been replaced through state grants. Those funds will be returned back to the enterprise fund. Similar situation with solid waste. Any vehicle we sell there will go into their enterprise fund. The remainder of those vehicles will go into the general fund.
Any question, Mr. Lael? Looks like you're trying to rotate out the buses with the six-liter diesels in it. That's probably a pretty good strategy.
I think that's probably the purpose. Plus, these are quite old, so.
Okay. Any questions? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Item D is a request from the Tax Office for approval of the October refunds and releases, and these have no county commissioners' names on the rolls and are in order.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And item E is a request for approval of the November 5, 2013 minutes.
We approve this. Motion to approve the minutes from Commissioner Boone. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith. That brings us to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. The Adult Care Community Advisory Committee, one announcement. The Board of Health, five announcements. Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee, excuse me, six announcements. Recreation Advisory Committee, four announcements. Zone and Board of Adjustment, four announcements. We're going to be busy next time. Appointments to boards and commissions. The Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, we have one appointment.
I just would highly encourage anyone to battle the traffic going to Charlotte once a month and sit on the board if I can attend and enjoy being with the Mecklenburg organization.
When do they meet?
Tomorrow, the third Wednesday of each month.
At what time?
6:00 P.M.
Okay. You can put me down on there.
Thank you.
All right.
You get lots to think to talk about on your drive down at 5:00 to get to the middle of Charlotte, so.
To be there by 6:00, you have to leave at 4:00.
Yeah.
I read this properly.
You get lots of ammunition when you're driving.
Let's go ahead and nominate him formally, if we would. It looks like we need to appoint someone.
Nominate Mr. Robertson.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I move to close the floor. Nominations, appoint Mr. Robertson by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Is there any unfinished business that comes to our attention this evening? Public comment period. We do have three folks who've signed up. First I have is Amy Miller, wishes to address the board. Ms. Miller?
Thank you for the opportunity. I just briefly want to thank the county, especially the Public Health Department. The North Iroh Ruetans is hosting a no-cost rabies vaccine clinic this Saturday, and the Health Department has been instrumental in getting us the information we need as well as getting the word out there. They have been excellent. So I thank the county commissioners, Mr. Smith, and the Health Department for that.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Next, I have Mr. Rhett Dusenberry.
Mr. Chairman, other commissioners, I'm Rhett Dusenberry, Commissioner at Large Town of Mooresville. As per the results of a recent election, I'll be rolling off of the Mooresville Town Board, and I will be relinquishing my position as liaison to the County Board of Commissioners. I just want to thank all of y'all for a very good experience in representing the town of Mooresville to your board. I admire the great work that you do, especially after the nice audit that we just saw and the $2 million increase and 27%. I commend you on the frugal use of the county tax dollars. I appreciate that, not only as a commissioner, but also as a taxpayer. And I just want to thank you for the great experience and the great work that you do. And also, on a personal note, thank you, Mrs. Moore, for your job. Great job, and best wishes in your future endeavors. Thank you, and I'll be seeing you in the peanut gallery as a regular citizen. It'll be a privilege. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Kirk Sherrill. Mr. Sherrill, if you'd come forward.
Yes, sir. My name is Kirk Sherrill. I'm here to talk about the crime lab. I've been doing a little research myself. I spoke with the Director of Finance at the North Carolina Crime Lab today, and I also talked with the Assistant Director of the North Carolina SBI Lab today. The million dollars in the hole in the crime lab, I understand that the commissioners here have been told that this crime lab may just come out of the hole and be for profit. The crime lab is a service to the North Carolina for the defendants in the state, and it's free service to the state of North Carolina. It's allocated, the monies are allocated by the General Assembly. And I feel like if there's any problems with the evidence, that they need to be taken up with our local and state representatives. Not every county in the state has a crime lab. I think it's a waste of our taxpayer money. I feel like we should stop the funding for the crime lab and put it back into the state and use that money on the county citizens where it's efficient. I can tell you right now, you're not going to make a profit in a crime lab. There's not a single crime lab in this state that makes a profit. It's not a business for profit, it's a service. There's a, I hear that the backlog of cases is why we have a crime lab, to kind of speed up the jury, the cases, to kind of speed them up through the system. I don't know of any cases where a defendant has gone before a judge where the evidence was not there because it was held in a crime lab. We all have a right to a speedy trial, but have yet to see that evidence. A million dollars in the hole for a crime lab and paying salaries of $70,000 or more and giving cars to people to travel back and forth to Raleigh when the service is free in the state is not efficient. It's not efficient for our taxpayer dollars. And I asked for this commissioner to take a really hard look at this crime lab, and I asked to stop the funding for it and put it back in the hands of the state. The second thing I'd like to talk to would be about the shooting range. I don't know if there's a public announcement when you need property. I don't know how it became about that we're given $8,000 a year to a millionaire on a private ranch up in the northern end of the county for a shooting range. It seems like other states and other counties are, they're bringing their, they're building a whole training center. Not only can the police departments and the sheriffs be able to go shoot guns and train, they can also coordinate with EMT and the firefighters and the local police officers. So you have like a one system here where they all can coordinate together versus just, you know, the good old boys' network going up to the country and firing guns. They used 1,500 gallons of diesel fuel to build this $50,000 gun range. We didn't use 1,500 gallons of diesel fuel to build the Hampton Inn Hotel off of Exit 36, a $5 million building. I'd ask the commissioners, I'd like to know how many people have actually been to the gun range, to show a raise of hands. Have y'all been to the gun range? Anybody? Nobody's been to the gun range? No, it's just, I just find it hard to believe, I mean, this $8,000 is going to a millionaire, and there's plenty of land in this county, we had 30 acres sell for $50,000. I just feel like the money would better be spent if the land was purchased by the county, owned by the county, and used by the county instead of private. I don't feel like public money should go to private individuals. And on the crime lab, I'd ask you to stop funding for that and take a hard look at that, because we're not in the business to profit from crimes. And I'd be glad to take any questions.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Do we have any new business come to our attention this evening? County managers report.
Just a quick update, we had some issues, as I updated you all via email on the permit changeover or the permit software changeover in central permitting and building standards, seems to all be up to speed now and things are working much better than they were, we had to close down yesterday, but everyone was able to get it caught up, and I think we should be business as usual in the next couple of days.
Okay. All right. At this point, I would move we're going to close session for property acquisition in accordance with General Statute 143, 318, 11A5. And Attorney-client, General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.